Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Will the clerk?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protam Wierich.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Chair Merk.
Here.
Vice Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Councilmember Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Nolan. Commissioner Corbin.
I got to move to.
Commissioner Jekielo. I mispronounced that.
I got to move to.
Absent. Commissioner Powers.
Here.
Commissioner Zabilla.
Okay, well, almost all present and accounted for, but a quorum. So, the meeting is now in session. If you'll join me in, I pledge to the flag. My pledge of allegiance is-
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me correct that. That was a pledge of allegiance, not a pledge to the flag. Some old bad habits.
Thank you.
Okay. We have public comment to start with, and I'm not sure if we have any general public comment cards. Are they all addressing items that are on our agenda? We only have one, but it's subsections. I'm not quite sure how the-
Is this just for here or is this for the general meeting for second meeting, which has a council meeting?
This is just for the special planning commission meeting. I'll tell you what, we'll just call on the three cards we have, and then we'll go into the usual discussion of a joint meeting with the council. So, Bob, is that Daddy?
This is Mayor.
Come forward, Bob.
Counsel and commission, thank you. The reason I'm speaking is I asked the attorney August of 2015 for some help with the BAB. It was a fairly new concept for us in Ojai. It's been around since 1953 in the state. And what it's for is to make things easier, for people to understand codes, what they need to do, how to get through the intricacies. I wanted to make sure that what we were doing was on solid ground. I went ahead and looked up a number of other cities moderate, just a ton of other cities that adopted a BAB before we have. So, I knew what they did. I sent a note to our city attorney and asked him to come up with a list of guidelines and what our responsibilities are, so we would be certain that we were doing what we needed to do and how we needed to do what we needed to do. So, Mr. Summers sent me two evaluations. One evaluation was August 31, 2015. That went to the city council, and that went to the different department heads within. And that was for, that was in request to my, that was in regards to my request. He then subsequently sent another one out in September to 2015 for public that wasn't marked with a confidential attorney stamp. Okay? So, confidential attorney stamp will stay here. I'm going to read from this one, and then I'm going to let some other people weigh in on this. And it said, "Introduction, as requested by the Building Appeal Board Chair, we write to provide our analysis of relative responsibilities of the city's planning commission and Building Appeals Board, and the Building Appeals Board role is the local appeals board and the housing appeals board. We conclude that the planning commission reports directly to the city with responsibilities over planning and land use matters. The Building Appeals Board oversee administration and enforcement of the uniformed building codes and provides comments on proposed changes to Title IX. Building regulations as requested by the building official." And then they went into a litany. And it really had to do with a few small areas.
Okay. Bob, and just as a reminder, we only have an hour for the whole thing.
No, no, no. I've only-
You're close?
I've got two more paragraphs.
Okay, go.
And what it is, it's appeal to decide on decisions made by the building official was what our main issue was. If the building official made some decision that a public person didn't think was correct, they had an out. We then had requests by the city council to provide, the city council is requested, and those were going to be the two main things. Since we didn't have a local appeals board or a housing appeals board, those were also rolled into the building appeals board. So, you had three boards rolled into one. What we do at the BAB is we do codes, we suggest codes, we talk to the building official. We don't do land use, we don't do those other types of things. We do decide appeals, and appeals to the appeals board are not reviewable by the city council, unlike the planning commission. This is from 2010. We still haven't gone through the codes upgrade for 2010. A half a dozen times, the building department came back for us to do this. We've neglected and missed the 2010 building cycle. We've missed the 2013 building cycle. We've missed the 2016 building cycle. We are incredibly far behind, and we need to move on these. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. We have a card. Vicky Carltonburn.
I just have a few quick comments, and speaking off the top of my head may not be the best idea, but two things are on my mind. The first is the building appeals board. The way I read the Ojai municipal code, the powers that are given to the building appeals board are pretty tight. And to get to the point, if the building appeals board is going to be basically writing code, enforcing code, and hearing appeals on the code, that can't be overridden or can't be, you know, the only body that someone can appeal to after the building appeals board is court. That's a little too much power, I think, in my book, and I would like to see that clarified. You know, if there are comments or direction or clarification given on particular building codes, that's one thing, but to write the building codes, to enforce the building codes, and then to hear the appeals is too much power. The second thing on my mind tonight is the alcohol-serving establishments in Ojai. I think there are too many. There's nothing wrong with any of them, but we have, at last count, approximately 45 dining establishments within the city limits. And outside in the Ojai Valley in general, it's probably closer to 60. You know, we are losing our establishments that serve the population, and we're being replaced, those are being replaced by establishments that are serving primarily tourists. And I think that whatever we need to do, maybe it's something creative, unfortunately, I don't have a lot, long list of ideas on exactly what to do, but I think we need to address it. And so, I'm really glad to see it on the agenda.
Thank you. And we have Michael Haley.
Hello. Good evening. I wanted to talk about the tourist-serving versus local-serving. Vicky was just addressing that. You all know my thoughts, I hope, at this point. I've written several letters, both to the planning commission and to the city council. So, I'm not going to go over, you know, all the stuff that I already said, but I just want to emphasize the point that I think we need a tool. I think we need a tool to be able to say no to some people, and right now, we don't have that tool. And that is the ordinance that I'm proposing. It's not that, you know, I think we should have a ban, all of a sudden ban tourist-serving businesses, but right now, if you just meet the design requirements and the other thing, we can't say no to certain kinds of businesses. I gave you guys a copy of the code of St. Helena, and I think that's probably too extreme for Ojai, but right now, you have no way. You have no way to do that. She just said 45. Whether that's true or not, we have a lot, and we might say, look, we need a moratorium on this, or maybe we need certain kinds and not others. We need to have some kind of control over this, and we don't right now. So, at this point, I'm really more interested to hear what you all have to say, so that'll be it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay. Well, that brings us to our discussion items. I'm going to turn it over to John, the other John. And should we just go down the list? Is that the intention of the planning commission, or you want to-
No, I think it's a little more, this list is kind of random, so I think we'll just-
Okay, well, those on the planning commission that helped compose the list, has somebody got one that they want to get right to?
Rosalie, why don't you jump in?
I'd love to talk about planning commission processes and procedures. I think that's something that's of immediate concern since the departure of our development director, and I think we need to have a discussion in order to bridge some of the concerns that I have and other people have had about the process right now. So, I don't know how you guys want to start with that, but that's what I'd like to start with.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point. Catherine?
I was just going to say, I had a question more for clarification. Are you referring to procedures amongst the planning commission during regular planning commission, or is this something to do with our relationship between staff and planning commission and our packets? Could you just be a little more clear on-
So, yes, all of the above. I'd like to, I expressed some concerns at the last city council meeting, not just about one project, but just in general, from what I've seen since we've gone to an interim. You know, it is by definition a weird position to be in, and things can start to fall through the cracks pretty easily. And my concern is that, you know, wherever, you know, that our reports, our staff reports remain as rigorous as they have in the past, and that we, as a commission, get very clear as to what council's guidelines are with regard to following guidelines, and that we keep the process as it was before. We have a checklist. Applicants have to have a complete packet before they come to commission. They don't present things at commission for us to make decisions on the fly, just the basic stuff that was in place before, and that's gotten a little shaky since, you know, we've had to change personnel, so.
Yeah, I think that brings up a good question. So, does the council have any plans to replace our development director? We haven't even officially been apprised that we don't have a development director anymore, but-
The city manager does.
All right, city manager. Can you give us an answer on this? Because we are increasingly adrift with-
Yes, and I'm sorry that you were not aware of that. We are recruiting for a full-time community development director. The deadline on that, I believe, is in early October. I want to say somewhere around the fifth or the sixth. And so, we are taking applications through that date, and we'll be hoping to get it filled as soon as possible.
So, sometime around?
Fifth or sixth.
Closes in early October.
So, sometime around Thanksgiving, we might have a director.
Or sooner.
Okay. All right.
Okay, a quick question. Was there a point when these procedures were written out?
Microphone.
Was there a point in time when these procedures were written out?
Well, there's a checklist for applicants. And there, isn't that correct, Mr. Winiger? There's a checklist for applicants, so they need to bring all their stuff and submit it, and then, you know, it just goes, stands to reason that a planning commission should have a few days to review the matter before they come and make decisions about what they're seeing, and that everything should, color should be written down, not specified as mid-range color, you know, it should be exact color specified in the conditions of approval and in the report. I mean, just the basic stuff that we've always done. So, I mean, and that, you know, I don't know how much of that is written down, but, you know, the commissioners who've been here for a long time understand that you have to have findings, and your findings have to be based on guidelines, and that's how you render an opinion. So, it's written somewhere.
I'd like to comment a couple of things. First, I want to correct the record a little bit, because I know this for a fact. There have been mistakes in staff reports for a long time, not just with the change in the director. So, I want to leave that impression, I mean, because I remember having some issues with some errors. And I think that's an important role of the planning commission to accept the responsibility of quality control on staff. And to be specific, we don't think that's ready for us to deliberate. I mean, I think you, I've always viewed the planning commission as an extension of the council in terms of the oversight function. So, I personally, as an individual council member, don't see any problem at all with the planning commission going, you know, that's really not complete and ready for us to deliberate tonight, if that's how you feel. I don't think you should be forced into feeling you have to deliberate because staff says you should, in other words. So, I, just a comment I wanted to make along those lines.
Commissioner Nolan?
Continuing on with this thought or trend here, I've been on the planning commission since 2010, and during that duration, we've actually had six community development directors. That's a big turnover, and that includes the interim ones. And I think, kind of going along with the standards idea, I know we have some checklists, but I'm wondering if this could get more formalized. In other words, I know I've dealt with some other jurisdictions, and that's not in my position as a planning commissioner, but in my line of work as a landscape architect. And you go in, they have a checklist, and I have to make sure that I've checked everything off, signed and dated. And then, when you go back to the planning department, they go through it, and if they see something missing, they take it back and they don't take that project in. You have to wait, you have to bring it back when it's done. So, truthfully, I think something like that would be advantageous, even though I know we have a checklist, but as Rosalie mentioned, in our packet, there's not always consistency, and that makes it a little more challenging. But by adopting a standard like that, I think it would streamline the whole process. And I do agree with you, Commissioner, or Councilmember Wierich, that, you know, as a planning commission, we can say to stop, but I think it needs to start with the staff when the project first comes in. Is it complete? And let's go forward. And I think the other thing that we have seen is the inconsistency, it makes it, you know, it looks like, is there favoritism here, or this project, they've done it really well done? It just needs to be even across the board, so there's no bias. And I know sometimes the applicant thinks maybe that's too much, but if there was a standard and it was consistent, and everyone's treated fairly in the same manner, I think that's a good way to go. That's my opinion.
Mr. Chair? Yep. My question is, I guess we ought to ask the city manager, what's being done differently now, if anything, than what was being done before?
I've certainly given no direction to the interim director to scale back or cut back or change any procedures. I think he and I have both acknowledged, and I think I've been clear up front to the council, and I'll make this statement to the planning commission as well, you know, Mr. Winiger is here limited hours per week. So, you know, the focus has been trying to make sure that we, you know, move forward, meet our deadlines, move the projects forward, and I think we've had to defer some of the more longer-term issues in order to make sure that we get the work out the door. Certainly, we can do that, and I think we can do that pretty well for a short-term period, although with some cost. Certainly, we know that we need to get the full-time director in there to be able to, really be able to fire on all cylinders. And again, it's not a knock on Mr. Winiger. I think he's doing a fantastic job, but, you know, we haven't given him eight cylinders to fire with. He's got six cylinders to fire with, and we need an eight-cylinder engine. So, I think that may be a little bit of what we're experiencing here, it's just not as many hours in the day, but there has been no specific direction to change our priority or focus or any of our procedures.
Okay. Mr. Powers?
Well, thank you for that clarification. I'm in alignment with Commissioners Zabilla and Nolan that if the checklist was expanded or streamlined, that whether there's an interim or a full-time director, staff knows what needs to be completed, whatever's happening in terms of the director position, and that we can count on the packets we get will be direct reflections of that guideline checklist. So, maybe the checklist needs to be looked at by those that are more familiar and have been on the commission longer, and maybe staff as well, and see what's missing and make some amendments to it. So, we're not reliant on full or part-time directorship, if our packets are a reflection of that or not. It won't even be a concern.
Mayor Johnston?
The reality of life is that it is an iterative process, which in this case would mean that we expect the staff to have their checklist and do the best they can, and we would expect the commission, when they receive it, if they don't feel it's as comprehensive. The list itself may be completed, but maybe there's something else that was needed that wasn't on the checklist and has not made the checklist. So, it requires both. It requires the commission, the council, and the staff. If we get something that we, at the council level, that we don't feel that we have adequate information, barring some sort of extreme deadline, we send it back. And so, that would be the first step. If the commission feels that they're not getting what they need, they need to help guide the staff, particularly an interim staff, by telling them what's missing. Whenever you go through something like this, as the city manager said, there's a gap, and then there's a sort of a gap in the institutional memory. I mean, somebody new coming in like Matt and who is not full-time is maybe not going to know all of the war stories and the folklore that we have here in Ojai to prepare the report. That's understandable. The staff is also under pressure between, let's provide good public service, at the same time, let's be thorough. There's a balance, and sometimes, while one is trying to expedite public service, maybe the quality or some of the information suffers, and I think the checks and balances have to be between the commission and the council. At least, that's the way I'm viewing it, and I'm viewing the commission as the one that collectively will decide the adequacy. Not everybody will agree whether what's adequate or inadequate, but when you make your decision, the council then will look at it and say to themselves, well, that's pretty good advice, or I wonder what they were thinking. And then, we go through our portion of it. So.
The one point that did come up, that I got the feeling when John said that the commission needed to know about what the recruitment schedule was, is maybe that's a communication failure somewhere along the line, that an assumption was made that the information went through. Did the other commissioners, were they aware of what was going? So, obviously, there's a little, you know, problem there.
Mr. Haney.
Can I speak to that, just to the commissioners? Have you ever contacted Mr. Winiger, and he's not been available or has not gotten back to you in a timely manner and has not clarified an issue in your packet? Just asking in all of you.
No.
Mr. Corbin?
No. I mean, I think I'm going to do something politically incorrect, but I think this whole issue came up in regards to one specific, you're going to say no, but it reached a head over one specific job, or, and I think if we're talking about procedures, I think that if somebody doesn't like the way the vote goes in the planning commission, they have every right to come to the city council as an individual community member and talk about it, but they do not have the right to make assumptions about what the other members on the planning commission understood or didn't understand. And I think that there's a big problem. It's like the elephant in the room, and I just want to talk about it.
Okay. Commissioner Quilisi?
Thank you, sir. I think we've had some very good discussion here about quality control on the part of the planning commission. I'm really glad to get the book here on Tuesday rather than on Friday before the Wednesday planning commission meetings, but I, for one, read every word of the book. And if I find something that either confuses me or vexes me or looks like errata, I communicate that to Mr. Winiger. And I have never found him anything but very responsive when I do that, and I salute him for that, considering that he's only working half-time.
Mr. Nolan?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I was not directing my statement to Mr. Winiger. As a matter of fact, I started off by saying that since I've been on the planning commission, there's basically been six planning directors, and I think you alluded to that earlier also, Councilmember Wierich, that we've, I've seen it happen over the years.
Over time, yeah.
Different community development directors. So, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not even putting blame out, I'm not targeting anyone. I just think if there was a standard, as Commissioner Powers recommended, that was passed on from director to director, it would just tighten it up a little bit. And I also am in 100% agreement that us as planning commissioners, we have to be part of that process also. So, I wasn't pushing it off on saying that it was down, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Wierich, you've been wanting to speak for a while. Do you want to?
Well, I just wanted to say, yeah, just to summarize, I think the planning commission is an integral part of quality control. And it's a hard, it's a big responsibility to accept as volunteers, but it is part of the system that we have, that you're part of the quality control. And so, you know, I just, I just think, I think that's been made clear by multiple parties here. But I think, just to directly answer your question, because I think, I think I know what you're talking about, I wanted to read something to you from the code. Purpose of the chapter Title X, one of the, the purpose of this chapter, and there's A through L, and one of them, J, is to require that the architecture in new and remodeled structures respect the city's heritage, expectations of superior quality, and principles of urban design as expressed in the city's design guidelines. So, in other words, and I think the issue has been whether or not those guidelines were, I think that you're addressing, the elephant in the room, and the issue that council had and communicated to the planning commission was we had a concern that the process wasn't fully followed with respect to treating the guidelines as the code prescribes.
I understand.
As part of the definition of the box within which, to use Councilwoman Blatts's language, the box under which the planning commission operates. The parameters of the box under which you operate are defined by the municipal code and by guidelines as adopted by council. And that's it. Personal preferences are not part of that deliberation. So, I, you know, I think that's just something worth stating, because I saw on the agenda here whether, the discussion about whether guidelines are permissive or prescriptive, I think what I just read in the code pretty much answers that question.
Well, I felt that we had the guidelines, and I felt that my decisions were based on what I read in those guidelines, and I think we had a conversation about the fact that the guidelines are not 10 things that are very specific, that there's a lot of things that are not black and white, and there are a lot of things that require a judgment call. And I think that we, at the planning commission, addressed that issue specifically with our attorney and asked him for guidance on how to read that, and I think he gave us guidance.
But understand, this council is what determines the parameters, not the city attorney.
Well, I think what we asked him was, what was the intention of what that, of how it was written?
Right, and that's ultimately a council's decision.
Okay.
What the intention is.
Well, that's fine. So, I guess, you know, I think that the applicant asks you where they were in violation, and I don't think they-
But you see, you mentioned that, and I take great issue with that, because the issue council had was that the guidelines were not provided to the applicant. That's an integral process problem when guidelines are not provided to the applicant. That's a factual finding.
Is that a fact?
Well, I-
Well, that was a testimony from the applicant.
Well, yes, but is there someone corroborating the applicant's-
So, that's a process-
I know that we got them, that's what I'm saying.
But that's a process issue. And so, what I'm saying, Commissioner Corbin, is that it's not a matter, the parameters, the definition of the box, you know, under which the deliberations the planning commission operates are, are defined by the council through the municipal code and by resolutions for guidelines. And interpretations ultimately are the council's decision.
Okay. I thought the issue was that we didn't get the guidelines, and we did.
Well, again, we had a finding, and we asked you to do a redo, based on what we felt were process problems. That's all.
Okay.
Mr. Haney?
So, instead of talking about one necessary project or problem, again, I think this comes back to Rosalie's original comment, and that's having a completed packet and a checklist. So, therefore, if someone was in the development in that zone, they would have received that handout on those guidelines. And you would have received-
And you would have received a handout on those guidelines in your packet. And I think that's what Rosalie is alluding to, is that we, we, as a council, and we as a, Mr. Winiger and our city manager, we're all responsible for providing, providing the proper information in the, in the proper amount of time, so that we can review it properly. And again, that's why we sent it back to planning, was the fact, and it was clearly stated that night, that they had not received the initial guidelines when they started the development of that project. So hopefully, when it comes back to you, they will have reviewed that, and they will have applied some of those guidelines, so that you guys can make the proper determinations. So I look forward to that.
Mayor Nelson.
Yeah, I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing a planning commissioner say that they did get the guidelines, maybe not the first, second, or third time around, but when the decision was made, did, is that correct, Bobby? Is that what you said? So what is this, I'm confused as to?
Well, the facts are, the guidelines were received at the third session of deliberations, not the first.
Right, but the commission.
And the applicant testified that he never got them.
Right, well, that, those are all facts for a jury later on. It seems to me what we're asking our commissions to do is to exercise judgment based upon what is presented to them, and my message to you here is, is if you don't feel you have enough to make a good judgment, then hold off, and I think everybody's agreed to that. And then after you've made your judgment, that always can be appealed to the council if there's a difference in opinion on things. I guess everything except for the building appeals board, that we're being told, can't be appealed, but, so it just seems to me, we ask people to exercise their judgment if we have a difference of opinion, so we exercise some different judgment, but it doesn't seem like we should say to someone, or to anyone, your judgment is wrong, it's just whoever had, you know, the appellate court has the right to overrule the lower court. And if we have that built into the system, I think we should be okay and not take it personally, at least hopefully, we won't take it personally.
Ray, did you want to add something? I'm hoping we can move on from this.
Yes, yes, and that's what I'm hoping my comment will do. So I would like to bookend this with, you know, Rosalie's, Commissioner Zabilla's original comment, and to get something tangible. So does the checklist the staff uses need to be amended, or certainly reviewed, and if so, what procedure do we want to put in place that that can happen, whether it be a commissioner or two meeting with staff? Like, what's an action point that could be taken, so we move this forward, and we can assure that our packets come a little closer to perfection?
Yes, I think we'll be able to discuss that. Mr. Black.
I, too, am a little confused. We're talking in generalities here, but Ray, if, what, what, what are some examples that you're not getting the information consistent with the checklist?
Well, that's what I want to default to Commissioner Zabilla on.
Right, but I mean, you're all commissioners, what do you feel you're not getting?
Well, I agree with Commissioner Zabilla, there's been packs, we've gotten, that the packets don't consistently have the same information. Sometimes guidelines are missing, some kinds, specific colors aren't there, sometimes we're not getting, yeah, data and studies, traffic studies, whatnot. Sometimes we're not getting, you know, specific pieces of wood and, you know, tile to look at and hold, to match the colors that are in the photos. It's varying, every, every case is different, but there is a lack of consistency.
Commissioner Zabilla?
I think it's clear, we just, I think staff understands, we need, we have a checklist, we need to follow the checklist, we need to have completed packages. We, as a commission, need to be quality control, and if we feel that it's not complete, we need to really continue it. So that, that is what creates a fair playing ground. And to Councilmember Randy Haney's point, we can certainly, I have called people who have prepared staff reports, and I have brought up my concerns to them. But, but sometimes, you know, we're, we're all volunteers, we get in at the last minute, sometimes it's only, you know, the day off, that we're, we're really having time to go, oh, my gosh, you know? And, and being able to continue a meeting should be a tool that we use, and not be afraid to use. And I think the last thing I want to say about this, and it goes to, to training, you know, Commissioner Corbin believes that she followed the guidelines, that's fine, but the way that you would make a finding is that you, you reference the guideline, and then you say how you, why your opinion is in concert with that finding. I think that would have perhaps helped everyone sort of understand that, you know, this is how we do findings, and this is how we demonstrate that we're following the guidelines, by referring to them while we're drawing our conclusions.
Thank you. I'd like to move on.
We've kind of covered four things.
Yes. I wanted to get back to this, this business about regulating businesses, which I think is a really dangerous concept. I don't know about commissioners or council members, but I feel like we have very good strictures in place in terms of our zoning to regulate the distribution of businesses, and I don't think we need to do any more on that. But I just wonder if council members have opinions on this, or, we've heard a couple times about the need for this, but I don't, I think it may be a thing that we don't actually need to solve.
I, oh.
Jump right in.
I think this is a very important topic of discussion. I think we should definitely air it out, I'd like to see it on the agenda. I started to do a little, little bit of research on my own, and evidently, you can regulate liquor licenses, but the tricky part is who you give them to. And, you know, that becomes, I mean, it's a, it's, there, when I go into local shops, people talk to me, the people, the merchants will say to me, what are you going to do about all these establishments that are basically selling alcohol? You know, they're, everybody's noticing that suddenly there's four or five new ones, you know? And so I think the public wants us to air this out, discuss it, research what other cities are doing, what, and I'm not saying, and I'm, you know, I met with the latest, the Topo Topo Brewery, and I have to say, I, you know, I like what they're doing, I don't think that it's our right to put a, no, we can't put the brakes on something that's already in motion, but I think what Michael Haley said, that we need a tool, so that if it becomes a problem, we have that tool. We may not need it, maybe it'll regulate itself, but I think we should definitely research what tools other cities use.
Okay. Commissioner Quilce, did you have a comment on?
Thank you, Chair. I have to echo what Chair Merk has said. I think it's a very dangerous path that we would go down if we start saying, there are only X number of businesses of this type allowed in this community. Right now, we are seeing a growth in, in what some people call tourist-related businesses. We are certainly seeing a growth in businesses with liquor licenses, but unless the business is there to support all of them, some of them will go away of their own accord. I think if, if we decide that we're going to change the municipal code to say, after a given date, no businesses of this type are allowed in the city, we would be inundated in lawsuits, and I don't think we want that. I think that we should allow the businesses that want to do legal businesses by our current laws to do just that, and then they will survive or not survive on their own. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Powers.
When I hear the word dangerous without any data backing up what the danger is, I, that concerns me. So there's an editorial, oh, it's dangerous, with no juice behind it.
Yeah, I was.
I have a concern about homogenization of the community, of too much similarity. I have a concern that we're not looking at the general plan close enough of what guidelines the city is supposed to follow, and the culture that the general plan alludes to, that we're trying to uphold. I also have a concern for families and children, and there not be enough businesses for them to frequent and go to. I do have a concern that many of the businesses opening up that are here to service visitors, and I have nothing against visitors, but I think there's a predominance of that. And I think it's okay to say, hey, you're four years behind the curve, we have three or four new wine tasting or beer tasting places have just opened up. Sorry, you should have put in your applicant four years ago, enough's enough. I think we have a right to do that, I don't think lawsuits are a problem. I did talk to our attorney about it, and what kind of evidentiary study needs to be done to say, hey, if there's too many of this, it impacts the well-being and health of the community. And, and there are other cities that have passed zoning ordinances. So I can't hop on board that it's dangerous to say no to someone, I don't know whose feet you think we're treading on, or why you think that's a danger. Those are my thoughts.
Mr. Corbin?
You know, I have a very argumentative son, and he gave me the same argument that you did about how everything would fall out, but it's more complicated than that. We live in a tiny, tiny little town, and a lot of businesses who come here are not run by either, A, people who have to support themselves by that business, or B, by people who only have that business in the town of Ojai. So while they may want to have a business in Ojai for one reason or another, their business in Santa Barbara, their business in Ventura, their business in Pasadena, or wherever else it is, will carry the one in Ojai, whereas somebody who lives in Ojai and has a business in Ojai, the, will suffer from the fact that it's a pie that's too divided. And it makes it very, very complicated to actually run a business in Ojai. So I think that's what you're seeing here in terms of how the businesses in town are changing a little bit, because a lot of them are being supported by businesses elsewhere or other businesses that those families have. So it's not just a matter of whether good, bad, or indifferent. If they have a larger pool of money to deal with, they're going to have something that's pretty well-run, or stocked, or whatever it is, and, you know, maybe they look trendy, and somebody will go there. And the reality of it is that people are not all that discriminating, and for the most part, each business will take a piece of it, and it may not be large enough pie to divide it up too many times. So it's a really complicated question. Well, it's, but it's, it doesn't have to do with how good it is, and what you're going to wind up with is businesses that are run by people who run lots of businesses, and it's, it just changes the nature of the town a little bit.
Mr. Haney.
So I just want to chime in on this word dangerous, because dangerous applies to everyone's statements. Everyone's making an opinion, is stating an opinion here, there's no facts. There's no facts behind anything you say. There's no facts behind anything you say. There's no facts behind anything that anyone has said here. It's interesting. I'm a landscape contractor. Do I want to create, do I, do I want to create an environment where only five of us can run a business here? The first time Mr. Haley came and spoke, I leaned over to Susan, and I said, you know, he's speaking about you. And she looked at me like, what do you mean? And I said, he's talking about yoga studios. You know, right now, there's probably 20 yoga studios and 20 more on the, on the block. I go, pretty soon, they're only going to limit you to five, and you're going to be in a lottery to get one of those slots on an annual basis. We need to be careful what we're thinking about here, and what we need to do is study it, we need to get some facts behind it. And we need to be prepared if we're going to do something of that nature. Think about the consequences of it. That's, that's all I would say on that. But again, that word dangerous applies to everyone, even me, who's making a statement right now. It's an opinion, until we have facts.
But that's what I was saying, that this merits fact gathering. This is not a subject we should brush aside. It merits a closer look. You know, fact gathering.
Mr. Wyer.
There are some facts, not specific to this town, but there are plenty of studies about what happens when government gets involved in picking winners and losers, for example, as opposed to just setting the character, you know, regulating the general environment. So, you know, I'm a great, I'm an absolute, have been a steadfast supporter of our anti-formula business rules, which don't pick winners and losers, that just say, you know, you're going to have to follow these rules if you do business in our town. And the history of, there are, there are plenty of, there's a lot of analysis of when government starts picking winners and losers, when government starts to say, you know, and having quotas and this kind of thing, that the laws of unintended consequences start becoming quite pronounced. And can it be done? Could it be done productively? I'm, I'm not saying it couldn't be, I'm just saying that certainly the laws of unintended consequences are plenty, very well documented if you have poorly designed micromanagement of entry and exit to an industry, or to a, to an economic system. So I just want to point that out, that there is a lot of studies about that.
Great, thank you. Any topics we haven't covered yet?
I have another comment on this.
Sure, Ray.
Because, I don't know, it's feeling like it's going to get brushed under the table. And, and I'm hoping it's not. There's something to be said about saturation of similar kinds of businesses in a town this size. So as you say, there's plenty of data. On the other side, there's plenty of case studies of cities that have saturation of certain kinds of businesses. And I agree with you, if every, if every other store was a yoga studio, I'd feel the same way. I'm not specifically pointing out tasting rooms, it's just right now that the alcohol proliferation is what's opening up. There's two or three opening up in the next year or two, more. So I don't want to walk down, you know, downtown and.
Where we go.
Yeah, yeah, well, whatever you want to call it. So I'm, I'm, I just encourage council to put some energy into getting data and evidence and really studying. Sometimes I see a tendency to not look at case studies outside of the city and just look at the city. And I know Michael's provided lots of things over this last year on various topics of, look what this city discovered, look what this city discovered, and I don't know how much that's, I don't know, how much that's really being looked at and discussed as viable case studies as it applies to our city.
I just want to follow up with one last, with one last comment. I live here in town, and I drive through town, and this town does not have a drinking room. This town at 8:30 locks down. This town, between 8:30 and 9 o'clock, you know, you can hear the chipmunks mating, I'm telling you. This town is as dead as a doornail at 9 o'clock, Monday through Friday, including Saturdays, including Sundays. So again, I think that's, I don't know the observation that people are making, but my observation is, one, we don't have a food problem, and we don't have an alcohol problem. Now, I guess the projection is, we might, so therefore, we should. You know? We might have one down the road, so therefore, we should do something right now. And, and again, part of me says that's fear mongering, part of me says that's just, just throwing something out there that has no, again, no facts behind it, has nothing that anyone has actually looked at. But I can tell you what, I did the Johnny thing, you know, Johnny walked around here during the tourism debate, and Johnny made some observations about traffic, and, you know, most of us agreed, there's a lot of traffic here. But I'll tell you what, when Randy does the alcohol walk, and Randy's not a drinker, by the way.
I got you covered.
Johnny's on, Johnny's on.
I walk everywhere.
Johnny's on one side of the street, and Randy's on the other, and we're looking at the liquor thing here. But I'm just telling you, I don't have a sense we have that. Ojai is an incredibly.
Ojai is an incredibly beautiful community that, right now, is functioning really well.
I'm not sure where you got that from my words, I didn't mention anything about Ojai being a drunk community or any of that. I was, I was speaking about saturation of particular kinds of businesses. If every, you know, if there were suddenly five more Mexican restaurants that wanted to open up, I'd be saying the same thing. I think we need to look at the general plan and see what the general plan wants us to uphold as the character and nature of the city. I get words.
It's a dangerous territory, you can jump in there if you want.
It's very interesting, because we're talking about saturation of businesses, but then we're talking about businesses that are tourist-oriented. Well, I don't know what a tourist-oriented business is. Are the wine tasting room tourist-oriented? I can tell you, every time I go to a wine tasting room, I see more of my friends there than I see tourists. So, I don't know whether that's tourist-based or not. Is the Ojai Beverage Company tourist-based?
Hanging out with Paul.
Yeah? Yeah? I mean, and these are managed, I mean, take Casa Baraca as an example, it's managed by people right here in Ojai, and they have, they look at their membership list. There's a lot of members from Ojai. It's not, I mean, sure, tourists are going to go in there, but I don't see a saturation of wine tasting rooms in Ojai.
Okay.
I really don't.
We only have-
And if we did, if that's what the economy is going to bring in, then who's to say it's wrong? That's the way I look at it.
Okay.
And I'd say the same thing about Mexican restaurants. If somebody wanted to, if three more Mexican restaurants opened in town, and they could all be successful, or power to them.
I think we, I think we share, I think we share different values of what the city is in that case.
Yeah, and there's, and we can do our own research and just see where it goes, but can we address the Bob Daddy said? Because I want to know if that was true. He doesn't, can we, can we go to that?
It's on here?
Yeah, it's on here.
Item one.
It's on item one.
Well, it's absolutely not true that-
Yeah.
-the BAB does anything about writing code.
Good, good.
That is the total and only purview of us on the city council.
Yeah, I just wanted to double check that statement.
Number two, there's no enforcement powers in the BAB.
Okay.
I think, see Mr. McCleary nodding his head emphatically. So, I, I think that there's been something of a mytharized to that effect, but in terms of the actual, you know, anybody can say anything they want to, and maybe there's been some inappropriate statements made by BAB members or other people, but nevertheless, I think it's factually the case. They have absolutely no legislative power and absolutely no administrative enforcement power.
Okay, that's what I thought, thank you.
And they differ.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Summers has a comment.
I wanted just a clarification, well, maybe Matt may be giving it, go ahead.
I was going to clarify those points, thank you. Councilmember, Mayor Perdón-Wyork is correct. The Building Appeals Board has a role in reviewing the building codes, which is true in the portion of the memo that I wrote that Mr. Daddy read, but that spoke just to the Building Appeals Board's role. The critical role in the code writing is the council's role. The council alone adopts legislation for the city, overlaid, of course, by the state's legislation. Every three years, the state rewrites the building codes. Those are adopted for the city by default by state law. There is no ability to rewrite the building code. However, local amendments can be made, if chosen, to certain pieces of the building code with sufficient findings and justification to justify those local amendments on a three, on a three-year cycle, which is presently being reviewed by the Building Appeals Board and the council on this most recent three-year cycle. In that role, the Building Appeals Board has the power to recommend local amendments and/or to recommend other changes to Title IX if requested by the council or the building official, but the Building Appeals Board has no power to adopt legislation. That power rests solely in the council and the state legislature. That's a piece that was missing in the prior conversation. The point about appeal, decisions made by the Building Appeals Board on an appeal of a building permit decision are correct. Those are not appealable to the council. Those are appealable only to a superior court, but that is solely when the Building Appeals Board is hearing an appeal on a building official's decision about a building permit.
And that's, I want to break in, that's also prescribed by state law.
Correct.
It's not a city ordinance, that's prescribed by state law, that it has to be that way.
The piece that was a choice made by this council previously that other cities have made in other ways is whether the Building Appeals Board exists as a separate body or not. The state building code requires the Building Appeals Board to exist. It does not require that the people who wear those hats be a separate body. Some cities, many cities, the council is the Building Appeals Board and sits as such when necessary. That was a choice made by this council previously. There's a, the wisdom is to the council, once created as it exists in this city, then the Building Appeals Board, in that case, they're sitting as the appeal body on building official decisions also related to the housing code and the administrative code, but that's all when the, when the building official's making a decision applying those state codes, then it's appealable solely to the superior court. And those, the last point on those, is those administrative decisions, does the, is the framing sufficiently thick to meet the building code standards? It's that kind of thing. They're not the discretionary decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Yes.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I think part of the reason we had this on the agenda was, it's come up several times during Planning Commission, where the commission, when we're looking at the conditions of approval on a project, where we may have said, "Oh, we'd like them to add solar," or something that had to do with the building, and then the question we had was, "Well, does that fall under our jurisdiction as a planning commission, or is that something that BABS or the Building Appeals Board would be handling?" I know it's come up more than once.
Yeah, we've had several things lately about gray water.
And we usually refer to Mr. Summers when that does, but-
I can speak to that.
It continues to come up.
All right. If you wish. Chair, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
The Planning Commission, when acting in a quasi-adjudicatory capacity, hearing a particular decision, setting the standards, setting the conditions for a particular project, has the power to impose any condition that is supported by the record and is otherwise reasonable, which means, yes, on the right record, you can impose a solar condition, you can impose a gray water plumbing condition. You wouldn't have the power, though, to set the standard that all projects have to have gray water plumbing, or have to have solar, or something else, something, you wouldn't have the power to rewrite the building code. That power rests with the city council and the state, upon, in the council's case, if they so desire, the recommendation of the Building Appeals Board. So, it's, the easy distinction is project-specific versus overall.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it's come up several times lately.
Unless there's a, something that's burning that you need to talk about, we have now reached almost 7 o'clock, and we need to transition into the council meeting.
I just want to ask, does it look like the tiny house discussion will be on the first meeting in October? That's what we were aiming for?
Trying to recall if we had that on October 10th or the 24th.
You guys can-
Right now, on the 24th, October.
Meetings adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.